In the Book of Genesis. And I feel like that we have treated Genesis as if we were running through the airport trying to catch a flight. I mean, when you go through Atlanta, and I guess somebody said the rapture, you don't have to go through Atlanta, you always go through Atlanta. But I feel like that I have been running through the airport. You know what that's like. Some of you at least may know what that's like. You come in on one flight, and it was late. And you don't know if you're gonna make your connection or not. So you're just running through there, getting on the elevator, going, um, the escalator, going down, getting on the train, going to another thing, and finally getting to your gate, and they say, "Sign up there says that it's been changed." You gotta go back, go back, get on the train, go to another one, find another gate. And finally, when you get there, out of breath, they're about to close the door, and you hand your boarding pass to the lady, and she puts it on there, and it beeps, and she says, "You're lucky, because we're closing the door." You get on the plane, and as soon as you get on the plane, they close the door behind you. But that's what you've done. You've run through the airport. And that's what I feel like we've done to the Book of Genesis. But we've got 66 books in order to study and to get the meaning of these books and to maybe learn something as we go along. And so we come now to the Book of Exodus. Between the end of Exodus, I mean, the end of Genesis, and somewhere in the Book of Exodus, there is a total of 430 years. Open your Bible if you will, please, to Galatians, Chapter 3, and verse number 17. Galatians, Chapter 3, and verse 17. And the first verse and final passage, read it out loud. Galatians.
And this, I say, that the covenant that was confirmed before God in Christ, the law, which was 430 years after, cannot disallow that it should be, that it should make the promise of none effect.
Okay, now I have a question for you. How many people, when Jacob and all of his household went down into Egypt during the time of famine, Joseph was already there, so what was the total number of them?
120 people, wasn't it?
Pardon?
How many people?
Yeah.
Wasn't it 120?
Pardon?
120?
No, there were 70.
70, yeah.
Oh, 70, okay.
There's 70, the household of Jacob that went down there. Now then, we leave the Book of Genesis, and Joseph is there, he's still in charge, and the Pharaoh, that was a friend of Joseph, he's still there, and all the family of Jacob is there. But now, 430 years have gone by. There arose another Pharaoh that did not know Joseph. And Joseph and all of that generation died. What did God do with the nation of Israel during those 430 years? He was developing that nation. They were growing, they were multiplying, until when we come now to this time of the Exodus, I think one reference that I read was about 600,000. Now, that's a big increase from 70. However, 430 years, we would expect there would be a great increase in that period of time. But God is developing the nation, He is preparing the nation. The new Pharaoh that is in charge when we come into the first chapters of the Book of Exodus, this new Pharaoh is suspicious that all of these people are going to be a greater problem than they are a blessing and a help. So He makes slaves out of them. And He puts them in charge of making brick for all the building constructions that He's, that He's doing. And here they are in slavery at the end of the 430 years. And then God begins to move. There was a long period of time when you wonder, is God really aware of what's going on in my life? Has it, has, it's been a while since I've heard from Him. Lord, are You still there? But God blessed a young couple. His name was Amram, and her name was Jacobed. And they had a boy by the name of Aaron, and they had a little girl by the name of Miriam, and then they had a baby boy. And this baby boy is one of the most important persons in the Bible. And I said a while ago that my prayer is that the Lord will open my eyes to behold wondrous things. One of the things that even as of yesterday, the Lord opened my eyes to see the importance of this man Moses. And so I'm personally dedicated, I want to read a good biography about Moses, I want to read the entire Pentateuch again and just make a study of it. You know, the five books of Moses, Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, and Deuteronomy, that's called the Pentateuch. And Pentateuch means five. Like up in Washington, there's a building with five sides on it, we call that the Pentagon. That's where the military has their headquarters. But anyway, a decree had been made that they could spare the little baby girls that were born to the Hebrews in Egypt, but the little boys had to be killed. The midwives were more merciful, and so they, they didn't do that. They did not obey the etiquette of the king. And so, when the kid, when the Pharaoh began to complain to them about it, they said, "Well, these, these Hebrew women are more lively than, than the Egyptian women, and, and before we can ever get to the house of the liver of the baby, the baby's already here, and we can't just go in and kill the baby." So during that period of time, God gave Amram and Jacobed another little baby boy, and they didn't want to kill him. They hid him for three months. And as the baby began to get a little older, they realized they can't just keep on hiding. And so the mother made a little boat out of bull rushes, and she put tar or pitch on the inside and on the outside so it wouldn't sink. She put the baby in there, and she carried it down to the river and put it among the bull rushes. And there it was. I'm telling this story, you already know this, but I'm telling it because it's such a fascinating thing to see the providence of God in the life of a family, in the life of a nation, in the life of an individual. And Pharaoh's daughter came down to bathe in the river with her attendance. And there they found this little ark floating and the little Hebrew baby that was in it. And the baby cried. I don't know if an angel pinched him about that time or what, but the baby cried. And Pharaoh's daughter, you know how women are. She just, she just melted, and so she wanted to adopt that baby. Moses' sister, Aaron, was a little girl, I don't know how old she was at that time, but she was hiding and watching that little ark, wanting to see what became of it. And so, when she realized that Pharaoh's daughter wanted to keep that little baby, then she went to her and said, "Hey, would you like for me to get a Hebrew woman to nurse that baby for you?" She said, "Yes, and I will pay her for it." And so she goes and gets her mother. And her mother now not only has seen her, her baby boy being spared, but she's being paid to keep her own baby. That, to me, is just marvelous. But you know, all through the Book of Ruth, the Book of Esther, and all through the Bible, these marvelous things take place. And they happen in our lives if we would just open our eyes and see it. They happen in our lives. He was a child of a slave and the son of a queen. He was born in a hut and lived in a palace. He inherited poverty and enjoyed unlimited wealth. He was the leader of armies and the keeper of flocks. He was the mightiest of warriors and the meakest of men. He was educated in court and dwelt in the desert. He had the wisdom of Egypt and the faith of a child. He was fitted for the city and wandered in the wilderness. He was backward in speech and talked with God. He was a fugitive from Pharaoh and an ambassador from heaven. No man assisted in his funeral, yet God buried him. That's Moses. That's Moses. It's so amazing. We are indebted to Moses because he wrote Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, Deuteronomy, and possibly the Book of Job. More on that later. But anyway, what would we do without these five foundational books in the Word of God? Listen to what the Bible says in Psalm 103 and verse number 7. Speaking of God, He made known His ways unto Moses, His acts unto the children of Israel. Psalm 103, verse 7. Now, if when you read the Pentateuch, and you get bogged down, maybe not in Genesis, maybe not in Exodus, but certainly in the Book of Leviticus and possibly in the Book of Numbers, when you get bogged down, just realize something. This is not normal stuff. This is what God thinks ought to be done. This is what God had planned for that day and age and generation. It's His acts, it's His ways. And so if we're gonna learn about God, then we need to read these five books, because this is what comes across, this is what comes across to us. In the Book of Genesis, we have the Book of Beginnings. In the Book of Exodus, we have the Way Out. I remember it like this. You go into a fast food, there's a arrow pointed on the pavement and a sign that says, "Entrance." You drive all the way around, there's another arrow pointed back out to the street and a sign that says, "Exit." Exodus is the way out, and this is the way that God dealt with the nation of Israel and blessed them. Leviticus has to do with some of the precise laws and so forth that God gave. And Numbers is the order in which God does things. And the Book of Deuteronomy is the Book of Remembrance, just so that Israel wouldn't forget those things. Now then, as we progress in our study of the Book of the Bible, we need each of us to continually bear in mind that we need to be reviewing these things. If all you get, men, is what you get in this class, you're not gonna get very much. But when you accept the challenge to give God more of your time, time in the Word of God, that's when you're really gonna learn. It's not what I teach you, it's what the Holy Spirit will teach you. And I've already said, some of you are more mature in the faith than I am, and I would learn from you. It's just my privilege to be teaching you, and I appreciate your prayers that God would help me to do a fair job. Now, we come through the Bible, and we come to realize that there is the principle of the gospel, and there is the storyline of the gospel. Now, there is something true. There is a chord that goes all the way from Genesis all the way through to the Book of Revelation, and it does not vary. There is no variance. There are two things. One is the principle of the gospel. And the other is the storyline of the gospel. Now, these two thoughts are not originally from me, I got them from a, if you will forgive me, not from a Baptist. I got it from a Presbyterian. Now, you have to be careful when you study other denominational leaders, because they mess up. And this guy, his name is Tim Keller. Any of you familiar with his writings? Tim Keller? What he does, and what he was doing when he passed away, I don't think he finished it. He was going through the entire Bible, giving the gospel in each book. The gospel in Genesis, the gospel in Exodus, and so forth. So I have to give him a little credit, and I can't claim credit for this. But the principle of the gospel has to do with the theology of it. The theology of the basic teaching of the gospel. I show it when I write. I don't know, does application have one P or two? Does anybody, it has two? Thank you, Brother James. The application of it. Now, there's no difference between the principle and the application. It's all the same, and we're gonna get into one aspect of that in, in the class today. But the storyline goes all the way through. For example, in the 22nd chapter of the Book of Genesis, we have, we have Abraham and his son going up to Mount Moriah to make a sacrifice. They have the wood, they have the fire, they do not have a lamb. And so Isaac is trying to figure this out, and he asks his dad, he says, "Dad, we've got all this other stuff, where is the lamb?" And Abraham gave a very classic answer. He said, "God would provide Himself a lamb." Now, there's more in that phrase than meets the eye. This does not say that God Himself is gonna have a lamb up there, even though that was the way it was, that God Himself is gonna be up there waiting on us, and He's gonna have a lamb for us. But the real theology of that is fulfilled in John, Chapter 3, and verse 16, where God literally provided Himself as a lamb, and the Lord Jesus Christ, the Lamb of God, died on the cross in our place. Now, that is the message and the story of Genesis, Chapter 22. That is the storyline of the gospel, and it goes all the way through the Bible, it is in every book of the Bible, it does not vary. God does not teach salvation as a principle by works. He teaches it exclusively by grace, received through faith, and the Bible does not alternate in that basic principle. That's the theology of it, that's the classroom of it. But when we come to the storyline, the application of it is for the heart, it's for the spirit, the soul, it's for the, it's for the emotions of a person. This is where we learn the principle, and this is where we worship, realizing that it's personal and it is applied to ourselves as individuals. Now, in the Book of Exodus, there are three basic movements. I'm gonna go ahead and raise this out, and I want to have room to put some more stuff on the, on the marker board. There are three basic movements. Now, there's a lot in the Book of Exodus, and we, due to the time element, are not gonna be able to talk about all of these elements. But number one, there is deliverance. There is deliverance. As they come out of Egypt, they're being delivered from slavery. Egypt is a type of sin, and their deliverance is a type of salvation. You and I were in Egypt, spiritually speaking, but God has brought us out of Egypt by His marvelous, miraculous work of salvation. Now, when we speak of deliverance, we know that it's talking about the time of the Passover. And so that's what we're gonna kind of concentrate on a little bit this morning, and, and I don't know how far we'll get with the other, the other parts. Then there is the law, the Decalogue, the Ten Commandments. Also, there was the spiritual code, the moral code, the spiritual code, and the social code. The, the moral law was the Ten Commandments, and we'll discuss that. And then there was the spiritual code, which we find in the Book of Genesis, the seven Leviticus feasts in Leviticus, Chapter 23, the five Leviticus offerings in Leviticus, Chapters 1 through 5, and we're gonna study that. I'm sure we're not gonna get into that today, of course, it's just gonna be next time or time after that. Then there is the social code, and this includes governing Israel's diet, sanitation, quarantine, and conservation, taxation, military service, marriage, children, and all of those things, and we'll get that in the Book of Leviticus too, even though we won't spend too much time on that. Now, how does that apply to us today? The moral code, and this is just a brief introduction, we're not gonna talk about the law right now, we're gonna talk about the, the Passover. The Ten Commandments are still real, but we don't have to worry about keeping them, because under the New Covenant of the New Testament, where we now live, the Holy Spirit, the Person of Christ, through the Person of the Holy Spirit, lives inside the believer. And it's not that we do not kill, we do not steal, but it's the perfection of the person who lives within us. You and I do not kill. Why? Because the love of God, Romans 5:5, has so come into our hearts and flooded out hatred until we have no desire to kill. And so it is the Person of Christ living His life through us that keeps the moral code of the Word of God. More about this later. And then there is the spiritual code. Through these offerings, we understand how God worked in our lives to save us. And through these Leviticus feasts, we see an outline of past, present, and future that is all through the experience of Israel. The way to understand the prophetic scriptures is to understand the nation of Israel and to understand what God was doing with Israel and through Israel. And it's a beautiful thing to see that from the very day one, God had the whole thing all mapped out. So none of us can pick up our newspaper and see what's going on in the world today. It's, "Oh, my, oh, look what's happening." No, 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 no. God planned it that way. I mean, even to the details, God is in the details. You've heard, you've heard the expression, "The devil is in the details," just forget that. The devil is not sovereign, God is sovereign. God is in the details. And so we can see the prophetic picture through Leviticus, Chapter 23. Not today, but we'll get to that a little bit later. But in the Book of, of Exodus, I'm not through putting this on the board here, number three is the tabernacle. The tabernacle. The tabernacle in the wilderness, that later was replaced by the temple, a more permanent structure, and had the same furnishings and the same meanings of all of those things, in both the temple and the tabernacle. But we look first of all at the Passover. Now, there's something that I want to point out that is very, very, very important, and that is the fact that in Exodus, Chapter 12, we have the Passover. And in Exodus, Chapter 20, we have the law. Let me go ahead and put those words up here. We have the law. Now, we're gonna be very, very rudimentary. Which came first? Which comes first, 12th or 20th?
12.
12th comes before 20th, right? It is very important for us to recognize in the giving of a law, because the law is so misunderstood in our day and time when it comes to getting saved. It is so important for us to realize that the Passover was given by God before the regimented righteousness of God was required. The regimented righteousness of God and the law is not within the framework of our, our, of our capability. We cannot keep the law. The law is perfect. The law is a picture of the holiness of God. And Israel so arrogantly said, "Okay, bring it on, we'll do it." Yeah. And the rest of their history is their failure. But is there anything wrong with the law? Absolutely not. The law is good, the law is holy, the law is right. But the Lord Jesus Christ is the only one that can fulfill it. But before He gave this regimented requirement of God's holiness and righteousness, He, in mercy and in grace, gave the Passover, which is, which is the grace of God and the mercy of God. Now, that is the wonderful thing about it. And this proves, this proves salvation by grace and not by works. Salvation by grace and not by works is a principle that is taught in every book of the Bible. It is the storyline that doesn't vary throughout the entire length of the Holy Word of God. And how wonderful that is. As a matter of fact, we're not gonna study the law today, but I just want to deal with one other thing that brings out what I'm talking about right now. The fourth commandment, remember the Sabbath day to keep it holy. There is one denomination in the United States and in the world that has taken that as the basis and the foundation of their religion. And you know what it is, without me calling the name of that denomination. They believe in keeping that one day. I don't know what they have to say about the other Ten Commandments, but that is the basis of their religion. But I want to ask you, what is the purpose of that? But I want to ask you, what is the purpose of that law in particular? And I hope that you have noticed this already. And if you haven't, I hope that the Lord will help us to see it. I'm reading from Exodus, chapter 31, and verse number 15. There's something here that if you just read straight through and don't stop and think about it, you'll miss it. And we don't want to miss this great teaching of the Holy Bible. Exodus 31, verse 15. He is repeating what he's already given in the Ten Commandments. "Six days may work be done; but in the seventh is a Sabbath of rest, holy to the Lord." Now, so far, so good. Here's the problem. "Whosoever doeth any work in the Sabbath day, he shall surely be put to death." Now hold your finger there. Go over to the book of Hebrews, chapter number four, and verse number 10. Hebrews 4:10. "For he that is entered into his rest he also hath ceased from his own works, as God did from his." So therefore, what does the Sabbath, the fourth day of rest, teach us? More than anything else, it teaches us that salvation is not by works. It is not by works. Ephesians, chapter 2, verse 8. "For by grace are you saved through faith. It is the gift of God, not of works, lest any man should boast." Let's also read from the book of Romans, chapter number four. Romans 4, verse 4 and 5. And here the Bible says, "Now to him that worketh is the reward, not reckoned of grace, but of debt." If salvation was by works, God would be obligated to save us. If God were obligated to anybody at any time for anything, not of His own choosing, He wouldn't really be God, would He? Verse 5. "But to him that worketh not..." That's the first step to coming to know Christ as Savior. That's the first step to being saved. "Worketh not." And I have another word that would replace that in teaching, not in translation, but in interpretation. And that word would be repentance. The two steps to coming to know Christ as Savior is repentance. And that means to quit work. Quit relying on those things that you relied on and ought to get saved that didn't work. The Bible calls them dead works in Romans, chapter 6. Our pastor preached on this Sunday night or Wednesday night, I forgot which one it was. "But to him that worketh not, but believeth on him that justifyeth the ungodly, his faith is counted for righteousness." And while we're on the subject, let's take one more. Romans, chapter 11, and verse number 6. "For if by grace, then it is no more of works..." Otherwise, grace is no more grace. And if it be of works, then it is no more grace. Otherwise, work is no more work. A plain, simple statement. So therefore, the salvation of a sinner cannot be a combination of works on the one hand and faith in Christ on the other. There are many Roman Catholic friends that believe that they have to hold on to their worship of Mary with one hand and also receive Christ and believe on Him as their Savior. It won't work. It doesn't work. It cannot work. "The dead works have to be left. Worketh not, but believeth," which comes entirely by grace. Now, this is the thing that we see in the great teaching of the Word of God on the subject of the Passover. Now, we've gone for 45 minutes. Let's take a brief break, and then we'll have a short study after that.
I can't read that well.
In the 12th chapter of the book of Exodus, we read about the Passover. I'm sure that you have all... I'm sure that you have all seen the stories of tornadoes. A tornado would come down following a path. It would destroy barns and silos and houses and kill cattle and farm equipment. And this will come on just destroying everything in its path. But there have been occasions, the reason not only to God, when that tornado will lift up and pass over a farm or a house, and it will sit back down on the other side and continue its path of destruction. It has passed over. The last plague that God gave in Egypt was the plague of the death of the firstborn. And Israel was told to prevent this. If you will kill a lamb and take the blood of that lamb and sprinkle it on the doorpost and on the lintel. And some have speculated, well, surely some even fell on the ground and it was all around. But anyway, if you will provide the blood, the night that I send the death angel through the camp to kill the firstborn of the Egyptians as a continuation of my judgment on Egypt, it won't stop at your house. It will pass over your house. And your firstborn will not die. Now, you and I have by faith placed the blood of Christ on the doorposts of our life. And the judgment of God is not going to destroy us. We're not going to die without Christ. We're not going to go to hell. This is going to pass over. The Passover was a substitution. The lamb had to die in the place of the firstborn. His blood had to be shed. You and I have the Lamb of God. So we have this substitution. The Passover lamb was sufficient. And you'll find all of this in the 12th chapter of the book of Exodus, verses 1 through 14. "It was sufficient; nothing but the blood was needed." Nothing could be added, only the blood of Christ. "So that when John the Baptist saw the Lord Jesus that day, he said, Behold, the Lamb of God, which taketh away the sin of the world." The Lord Jesus Christ is our Passover lamb. And the Bible tells us also in 1 Corinthians, chapter 5 and verse 7, "Christ, our Passover, is sacrificed for us." There is absolutely no way that anybody can add any other sacrifice that can claim any other faith in any other thing except in what the Lord Jesus Christ has done for us. And this has to do with principle. The principle has not changed. Salvation is by grace alone, through faith alone. The blood of Christ is the only thing that can wash away our sins. Not the Lord's Supper, not baptism, pure faith in what Christ did on the cross of Calvary. A person who comes to be saved must bear in mind that Christ died on the cross, that He was buried, three days and three nights later, He arose from the grave. And the person trusting Christ has to have that concept in his mind, in his heart, in his thinking, in his belief structure. He has to believe that Christ did it all on the cross of Calvary. "That no man, lest any man, should boast." The only person who is worthy to receive the honor and the praise and the glory for keeping me out of hell and taking me to heaven is the Lord Jesus Christ. God will not share that glory with anybody else or with anything else, only by the grace of God. Now, there is a problem in the world today about the Lord's Supper. You know there are different religions, there are different groups, and there are different beliefs about the observance of the Lord's Supper and about baptism. We as Baptists hold to what we call to be ordinances. Ordinances. Ordinances are purely symbolic. They're purely symbolic. There is no saving grace in the observance of any ordinance, be it baptism or be it the Lord's Supper. There's no saving grace in these ordinances. But beginning with the Roman Catholic Church and continued with Protestant churches all over the world, the word changed. And they observe what they call And a sacrament is something that is more than a symbol. A sacrament is a sacrifice. Now, the Roman Catholic Church teaches, and I'm not speaking derogatorily of the Catholic Church. I'm speaking factually. And if they were here, if a priest were here, he would acknowledge what I'm saying. They have what they call transubstantiation, in which the bread and the wine, and we at Tiptonian Baptist Church do not use fermented wine. But they teach that the bread literally, actually, miraculously changes into the actual, very fleshly body of Christ.
I got one question on that.
Okay.
That question is, when do they believe that becomes the actual body? Is it a process the priests do, or is it when they receive it? Do you understand what I'm asking?
I understand the question. I understand the question. I'm not capable of answering the question definitively. I believe that it's when they actually put it into their mind.
Okay.
That's my belief about it. I would need to do some further research as to the teachings.
I got family in it, it's the reason I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. It's a good thing to think about and to look into. Okay. They believe that the bread literally becomes the flesh of Christ, as the Lord Jesus said in the book of John, "If you eat My flesh and drink My blood." But He goes on to explain that in the same context, which destroys their teaching of transubstantiation. Now, Protestant churches also believe that though that does not occur, that it does not become the actual, literal, fleshly body of Christ, yet it is the presence, the presence of Christ in the bread and the presence of Christ in the wine. And they have to believe that in order for it to be a sacrifice. I just want to point out the fact that the Lord's Supper today that we as Baptists observe is not a sacrifice. It is a memorial of a sacrifice. The sacrifice that took place 2,000 years ago, when in full-female prophetic scripture, the Lord Jesus Christ shed His blood on the cross of Calvary. That is the sacrifice. That is the only sacrifice that we're to look to. That is the only sacrifice that we're to put faith in and to put trust in. So the Lord's Supper is not a sacrifice, and we do not observe it by faith. We observe the Lord's Supper by obedience. Obedience is not faith. Obedience may be based on what you believe God said, and you obey God. But obedience is what we do when we observe the Lord's Supper. Now, the tabernacle worship ended when Christ said on the cross in John 19:31, "It is finished." Now, open your Bibles, please, to Matthew 27. Hey, this is intense, isn't it? I feel intense as I'm teaching it. I hope I don't come across in the wrong way. But it is intense.
Yeah, yes.
Matthew, chapter 27, and verse number 50. Well, let's read verse, yeah, verse 50. "Jesus, when He had cried again with a loud voice, yielded up the ghost." Now, when you die, you're not going to yield up the ghost. The ghost is going to yield up you. The Lord Jesus is in full control of what He was doing on the cross of Calvary. He died on purpose. He died voluntarily. And when it came time to die, He consciously yielded up the Spirit. "Father, into Thy hands I commend my spirit." None like the Lord Jesus Christ. He is God. He's still in control. He's performing a ministry while He's there on cross. He is not passive. He is active. Passive is somebody that receives something. If I give something to my friend, I'm trying to say what I want to give. I'm actively giving it. I'm giving it. And you're going to give it back?
I give it back.
And he receives it. He is passive, and I'm active. Now, they nailed him to the cross. It would appear, well, he's passive. And they cursed him, and they pulled his beard out, and they did all these terrible things to him. It would appear that he was passive. No, in this case, he was in full control. They could not have driven those nails had he not permitted it to him. And so on we might go. But I lost my place. I told you this is intense, intense study. And Matthew, chapter number... And Matthew, chapter number 27 and verse 50. "Jesus, when He had cried again with a loud voice, yielded up the ghost." Now, here's the part I want to bring the emphasis on. "And behold, the veil of the temple was rent in twain from the top to the bottom. The veil of the temple was torn in two, from the top to the bottom." The temple replaced the tabernacle. And we haven't got into that study yet, there's not time today. We'll do it maybe next time, we'll see how it goes. But there was the holy place that contained the table of showbread, the menorah, the seven golden candlestick, and the altar of incense. Then there was a big veil, and the priest ministered in that holy place every day. Then there was a big curtain, and behind the curtain was the most holy place, or the holy of holies. And in that, there was the Ark of the Covenant. The Ark of the Covenant was a box that had inside it the law, copy of the law, Aaron's law that brought it and some other things, but a pot of manna. But on top was a golden lid. And that golden lid had a cherubim on each end, and their wings came together, and their gaze was right here. This part of the lid was called the mercy seat. And so, once a year, the high priest would go there. Nobody went any other time. And nobody other than the high priest went once a year and sprinkled the blood on that thing on the day of atonement. This is not the Passover, this is another time. Sprinkle the blood on that mercy seat once a year. And so, this is what happened. God had been saying, "Don't go behind this curtain." Nobody does. Only the high priest, once a year. Not without blood. All these requirements. And He Himself had principle or things of purification He had to do before He would be qualified to go back there. So God is saying, "Stay out, stay out, stay out." This shows that salvation is by grace, only God can do it. There's nothing we can add to that. It is purely the work of God. He's saying, "Stay out, stay out." But now, what happens? When Christ yields up the ghost, He dies on the cross. "Behold, the veil of the temple was rent in twain from the top to the bottom." Now, this was a thick curtain. It was 15 feet tall. It had to be a miraculous tearing. Nobody would have dared to go in there and catch the hem of that curtain and try to tear it up. But it, from top to bottom, indicating that God did it. He's the only one that could, only one that should, only one that would. And the earth equate, and the rocks rent. Now, what has happened? God gave Moses the instruction, even in the tabernacle and the wilderness, to put a curtain between these two rooms. Stay out of here. Just come in once a year with blood. Otherwise, stay out, stay out. But now, Christ has provided His blood. And God tears that curtain in two, from the top to bottom, and makes it wide open. The forbidden place is now open. And what's happening? God is in effect saying, "Okay, you can come in. You can come in. Come one, come all, trust Jesus as your Savior." His blood. Isn't that wonderful to think about?
Yes.
Now then, how foolish would I be if I tried to change something to make it something else? Instead of this, it becomes this. I get carried away and don't feel things right. But anyway, I would be foolish to do that. Yet that's what religion has done. Satan wants people to have the idea that they can have to do something, do something, do something in order to get saved. No. It's believe in the Lord Jesus Christ. Realize that your past is to no avail, and turn from that in repentance to believe exclusively in Christ as your only and sufficient Savior. Now, call it by whatever you want to call it. Call it the Eucharist or call it the Mass. Call it a sacrament. That's not what it is. It is an ordinance, something to be obeyed, and it is a symbol of what Christ did on the cross of Christ. Christ is not present in the sacrament. It is not a sacrifice. The sacrifice is already concluded. And He is not in the bread, He is not in the wine. Where is Christ? He is seated at the right hand of the Father to make intercession for us. That's not the only place He is. Where else is He? By the Holy Spirit, He lives in our hearts. And the believer, trusting in Christ, has that assurance. Here is Christ in my heart, in my life today. So Christ is not in the Mass. He is not in the Eucharist. He's not in bread. He's not in the wine. Not His flesh, not His body, not His spirit. And there's a whole bunch of scriptures that back this up. I think we're going to have to finish this next time before we move on into the thing. But we can't, we can't not take in these scriptures. Okay, you got your pen ready? Hebrews, chapter 7 and verse number 27. First person to find it, read it out loud, please. Hebrews 7:27. "Who needeth not daily, as those high priests, to offer up sacrifice, first for his own sins, and then for the peoples? For this he did..." And what is the next word?
Once.
Once. Pastor has dealt with this so faithfully recently. Let's put this word up here. "When they offered up Himself." Now, go to chapter 9 of Hebrews. And look at verse number 7. "But into the second went the high priest alone, once every year." That is the second room, or the second compartment, the holy of holies. "Not without blood, which he offered for himself and for the errers of his people." And verse 26 of that same chapter. "For then must he often have suffered since the foundation of a world..." But now, what is the word? Once. "...in the end of the world hath he appeared to put away sin by the sacrifice of himself." Now, consider verses 27 and 28 of chapter 9 of Hebrews. "And as it is appointed unto men..." How many times to die? Once to die. But after this, the judgment. So Christ was offered... What is the word?
Once.
"Christ was once offered to bear the sins of many, and unto them that looked for Him shall He appear the second time without sin unto salvation." Chapter 10 of Hebrews, verse number 2. "For then would they not have ceased to be offered, because the worshippers once purged should have no more conscience of sins." Pastor brought out something very good. I can't remember, it was Wednesday night or Sunday night? I think it maybe was Wednesday night, when he was preaching from Hebrews, chapter 6. And the different interpretations of that. Were you present in that service for the Chris?
I don't go anywhere.
I think, I think maybe you were, but he was preaching about this. And that says that it is impossible for those once enlightened, should they fall away, to be renewed under repentance. So, this whole matter, to support your belief and my belief, and hopefully, our friends that do not believe this could be corrected. But to realize that... Now, hang on a minute, I'm having a senior moment. This has been so intense. Where was my brother, Kobe?
I'm having the same moment.
Okay. If a person could lose his salvation, as Pastor brought out in his message so clearly, that would conclude the fact that they cannot be saved again.
Yes.
I don't know anybody that believes that you can lose your salvation once you get it, who is willing to believe that you're lost forever. After that, you can't be saved again. But that's not what that passage teaches, as Pastor brought out so clearly. But notice also in verse 10 of chapter 10, "By the which will we are sanctified through the offering of the body of Christ..." How many times? Once for all, once for all. Now, go to 1 Peter, chapter 3. I hope you're writing these references down. Go to 1 Peter, chapter 3, and verse number 18. "For Christ also hath..." How many times? "Once suffered for sins, the just for the unjust, that He might bring us to God, being put to death in the flesh, but quickened by the Spirit." Once. How many times did Christ die? Once. So therefore, is the Lord's Supper a sacrifice in which He dies again? No. It is a symbol. It is a memorial, it is a remembrance. And how precious that time is when we come to realize and we symbolically take of the bread, and we take of the fruit of the vine, and we think about the body and the blood of Christ. A precious time in our Baptist churches when we observe it as an ordinance, not as a sacrament. Now, some people may disagree with me. I believe that the Lord's Supper should only be observed by that local congregation. This is one of the reasons I believe that. Would it be just for us to invite people who believe in the sacraments and the sacrifice and the presence, literal, physical presence of Christ in that? Would it be right? Would we be doing the Lord right? Would we be doing the ordinance right? Would we be doing that other Christian right to have them participate in something that they do not believe in? Okay, so much for that. We'll move on. I know that's a controversial subject, cause that. Go to Jude. Jude only has one chapter, and we're going to read just one verse. In Jude, chapter 1, and verse 3. "Beloved, when I gave all diligence to write unto you of the common salvation, it was needful me to write unto you, and I told you that ye should earnestly contend for the faith." That's a very important word. "The faith, which was..." There is our word again. "Once delivered by the saints." Brother Chris, thank you for the questions you've asked. And here is another additional answer to that question. How many times did he make the sacrifice? Once. How many times does a Christian, does a sinner have to come in faith and receive that? Once. Was that one time he offered on the cross sufficient for all eternity? Yes. Is one time in the life of an individual to repent and believe on Christ, is that sufficient? Yes. Why? Because it is a work of God and not the work of man. we have seen that in Hebrews, chapter 4, verses 14 to 16, He is present at the right hand of the Father, and He is present in the heart of the believer. Two more verses, and we're going to conclude for the day. Colossians, chapter number 1, and verse number 27. "To whom God would make known what is the riches of the glory of this mystery among the Gentiles, which is Christ..." Where?
In you.
In you. And what is that? The hope of glory. Oh, beloved, we are so wealthy. We have so much for which to praise God. And how does that presence of Christ come into our heart? Romans, chapter 5, and verse number 5. "The hope of glory and hope make it not ashamed, because the love of God is shed abroad in our hearts by the Holy Ghost, which is given unto us." I'd rather be an old-time Christian than anything I know. And beloved, the wonderful thing, I've just come back from Mexico teaching the course on prophecy. And one thing I say to those students, all through the Bible are the events of prophecy. But the event of prophecy is not the big deal. It's the person that makes the difference. For example, we talk about the rapture, the rapture, the rapture. We're looking at our escape. And that's wonderful. But it's Him and His appearing and His coming and our being with Him. The presence that is in our hearts. Well, one day, we won't have to have faith anymore. We will no longer have hope because all that will be washed away in the reality of His presence. Our Father, I pray to the sweet Holy Spirit would apply these studies to our hearts and minds, and help us to grow in grace. For Christ's sake, we pray. Help us to be better Christians. Help us to be good witnesses. Help us to win lost people to Christ. In Jesus' precious name we pray. Amen.